We're gonna do that thing, or is that being handled for the thirty few days?
So that's one thing that would be in this information because he did give us this general schedule, which we can definitely sit with. This just gives a little bit of alternative, um, styles to. So maybe if we look at all that information and then we, if we wanna input anything else with that, we can let, ask Gary like to kinda go over it and get his input and then do some of those details. Um, cause she did give really good suggestions about, um, like who you select for tours or those kinds of things too. She kinda added some guidance and he also had made comments that, you know, the importance of, of those kinds of things. So it's just a little bit more information, sorry, more reading, but like to maybe help us make some of those, um, decisions.
Okay.
And some of that might have to be in executives because it's specific people, right, roles or, or a special meeting or no? I guess we could ask Gary, go do that.
To, to determine who's gonna do your tours and stuff.
Yeah, if we get down to talking about specific people or is that something that just gets dictated by?
Unless there, unless it's a performance issue with non-elected personnel.
We talk about that here?
Then it's probably an open session.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
Anything else that we need to go over on that that I might've missed?
I know.
And I will touch base with Gary too, just to double check anything we might be missing and what our next steps. We have it here, but just make sure we're not forgetting.
He's ready to talk.
You're ready for it?
Yes.
All right. Well, hopefully this will take a little easier on your brain. So I'm here to talk about the calendar committee. Uh, start off with a little background, uh, just from, for the board members, uh, maybe new to this process. So we have a, we have a committee that we put together, uh, made up of three classified people. Those folks are appointed by our meet confer group. We have nine teachers that are appointed by the association, uh, teachers association, three at each one of our levels. The intermediate middle school share those three positions. Three building administrators that are appointed by the deputy superintendent. And we have six parent community members appointed by the association and the deputy superintendent. And then we have some advisory member people as well. Two board members sit on this committee, uh, we invite the Catholic schools to participate, uh, Holcomb USD three six three and then a representative from G C three. Uh, purpose of the advisory group is just if we start to make plans, uh, spring break is really a good example for us. And we start talking about, you know, when should spring break be, what are our options in terms of looking at this calendar? Um, we try to coordinate those so that we can align those for, for the purpose of our community. Uh, the community or the committee members sit on a three-year term and those are staggered. So part of the reason for that is, so we have some consistently consistency, we're not starting over with the process every single year with brand-new group of people. So as an example, we have three high school teachers, so two of those high school teachers, uh, one has just been added new this year. The other two are a little more veteran. So at the end of this process, one of those high school teachers will step down. The other two kinda shuffle through in their two years of service and then G C A president, uh, will appoint someone new or ask someone new to participate in the upcoming calendar committee. Uh, again, just gives a little different perspective, uh, as we work through the process. And there's a lot of historical value as you're working through this. It's pretty integral as we're going through that, so it's good to have, uh, people who have been through it a little bit and, and some to learn as we go, go through it. So, whoops. So what is it that the committee does? Uh, our goal really is to create the best calendar for students within the provisions of the negotiated agreement. Uh, we really start off in our very first meeting talking about our norms. Uh, and that's one of the norms that we continue to have had, we'll reevaluate those every single year, but creating the calendar that's the best for the kids. Because we have, Mark used it, rabbit trails or rabbit holes that we have a tendency to go down through as adults too. And sometimes that gets lost in, in what's important to our students. So we continue to come back to that. The second part of that is within the provisions of the negotiated agreement. So there are certain things that we have to adhere to. Uh, the number of student contact days is a big one that comes up. So that's currently outlined, that's something that we negotiate, the board and the teachers group negotiate every year in the contract. And the sitting contract is what we're operating under as we start to go through those provisions. Parent-teacher conferences, how those are set up, um, the number of in-service workdays, all those kinds of things are in consideration, but it's based on the provisions of that contract. So that's what really kind of our basis, if you will, is what we start with. So two calendars, so we start off, um, with just open ideas essentially, uh, to create drafts and I'll get to that in a next slide or so. Uh, but we start looking at the number of total hours that we have, again, in-service days. That language is specific in the contract, not to exceed more than ten days combined. Uh, parent-teacher conferences and then length of the duty day, um, is also something that we consider. Other considerations, um, as we're going through this process, like you guys have just discussed, it's important for us to gather input. So we've always given a staff survey as long as I've been doing this. And, and we review those questions at the beginning of that process to see, are these the kinds of questions that we want to be asking? It's gonna elicit the information that we need in order to help kind of frame or build that calendar. Uh, several years ago, it was made, a suggestion was made to expand that and get more input from the community. So I think Dana's time is when maybe we started that, three or four years ago, um, we opened up that survey. It's a, it's reduced with the number of questions that we asked, but we did create a parent survey or a community survey that we send out as well. So the parent-staff survey this year, uh, we have five hundred and ten responses from patrons, community parents, and we had six hundred and ninety-one responses from, uh, staff members. I gave you the comparable data that we had from last year, thirteen hundred and ninety-eight parents and seven hundred and sixty-seven, um, from our staff. So things that we're asking them is timing of parent-teacher conferences, when in the nine weeks should those be held? Timing again of spring break, um, kinda coordinating that within our community. Which federal holiday should be observed, uh, the length of winter break? Uh, because we, in the past anyway, have hired lots and lots of teachers from a great distance from Garden City and so sometimes that's important to extend that Christmas break to give those folks opportunities to travel. Uh, and then collaboration day configuration. Uh, so those are all just examples of some of the things that we're looking for to get input. Other considerations for the group is really balancing semesters. That's something that gets overlooked a little bit, um, that has really been important for our staff. As you're starting to go through and create drafts, if you will, it seems really easy to just take off this week or move this down to this week. But in doing so, it's kind of a give-and-take proposition. So you shorten this semester and we're still gonna use the same number of days, but they're gonna get tapped on, you know, at the end or in the middle. And sometimes that influences those semesters, which doesn't make teachers happy, uh, all the time. Starting and ending dates, uh, again, is something that we consider and, and how we begin to create drafts. Uh, in this particular group, we had six meetings, a little bit different, we had some face-to-face, we did some Zoom and we had some communication via email. Uh, but all in, we had ten drafts, um, that we cycled through, uh, at different times. And then from those drafts, well, I like this from this and I like that from that and start to narrow that focus down until we get it to the two that went to a vote. Sorry, I forgot to punch the button. So this is the two calendars that we ended up, I know this is terrible to read, so I gave you the two draft copies in front of you. Uh, and this is, this is what the committee landed on, out of those ten, we narrowed it down to two drafts, uh, calendar A, calendar B. Those were sent out to a vote of the teachers and, um, I, I just take a look at those drafts really quickly. So some of the considerations were just talking points as we went through. We talked about, um, looking at our Thanksgiving break, our fall break. And staff liked the idea of having that entire week, uh, off. So we, we had a draft that built in the twenty-first and twenty-second of November, um, where we took that off. But again, taking those days off, then it has to change somewhere else. We looked at Christmas break and the length of Christmas break. And in the, the two calendars that you have, one you'll see starts just a day later, but the other draft extended that longer into January as an example. Another consideration this year, which we haven't done for three years, I believe, is we have a program that we use with our secondary schools called Avid. Uh, we had a presentation about Avid. And so three years ago, we, we took time as a district to do a district-wide Avid training for all of our secondary folks. The Avid program or the Avid company, they have certain requirements in order for us to, to have a training in district. Has to be after a certain date, uh, has to be back-to-back days, um, those kinds of things. Uh, and then typically our catch-up process with that Avid, um, in-service or training is we send people off to a summer institute, it's called, and we do that. Well, it's kinda gotten to the point now where it's expanded, we have more people that need training and we have opportunities to send in the summertime. So now it's been three years, so now it's time for us to kind of regroup, if you will, get everybody trained again. So that was one of the, the tasks, if you will, that was put on the committee, was to create a back-to-back in-service opportunity so that we can address, uh, Avid for the secondary folks. And you'll see that in September, um, the twenty-ninth and twenty, uh, twenty-ninth and thirtieth are those days. So that kinda gives you a little bit of an idea of just some of the things the group does, uh, I guess in terms of calendars. Uh, wrestling with the drafts, lots of discussions. Uh, you can see from that committee makeup that there's, you know, different perspectives and, and what works for elementary folks doesn't always work for secondary folks and, and vice versa in terms of, you know, grades and when conferences should happen and last days of school and all those kinds of things. So it really is trying to balance, um, what we can put together under the provisions of that contract, the negotiated agreement, uh, to provide the best calendar we can. So where that group has landed is calendar A. So the recommendation from the group, um, will be to have the board consider calendar A. These are the results from our votes. So we had two hundred and twenty-four people vote for calendar A, hundred and ninety-three people vote for calendar B. Um, we had four hundred and seventeen out of five hundred and seventy-three potential participants, uh, which was a result of seventy-two point eight percent participation. So at this time, uh, we're not asking for any action, but we'd like the board to consider adopting calendar A for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Can I answer any questions?
Can you verify, do all voting in that?
So that's also outlined in our contract, so it's teachers only that gets the vote. So we get input from all the staff, that's how we do or what we do with the survey. So that's why that number might be, uh, a little different or inflated. Uh, we wanna gather input from everybody, but when it comes time to vote on the two drafts, it's just teachers. Um, they get to vote on that. Administrators don't get to vote, uh, retirees that are coming back to work don't get to vote. Uh, people that are in the bargaining unit essentially of, of the contract get to vote on the calendar.
And how does that percentage compare to past years, do you?
Uh, I, I think it's relatively the same, but I don't have those percentages in front of me.
Any else?
I do have a question on the surveys. And I should've followed up with this when you, when you guys responded to my set of questions on the calendar. But on the initial one, because this is a pretty close vote, um, there's, I mean, in my opinion, it's pretty close. And one of the questions I had on the original survey questions was, um, can we break this up by, um, uh, building levels? And I know the response was, so we don't ask them for the building that they belong to, but we do ask the building level, right? Because one of the questions did have elementary, intermediate and I believe high school. I think, is it three different levels that one of the questions asked what, what level they're in? And so my question was, can we do the, cause you know, Survey Monkey, you can like manipulate the data very well to, to show different things. So my question was, is it different, can we, can we see some of those survey votes? Cause I'm, I'm really curious, one of the questions that was asked is, you know, between elementary and, and the intermediate. And so I guess that's one of my questions is like, who, is that the difference? Or is that why it's so almost split evenly? Is it a certain calendar meets the needs of a certain building level and the other calendar? You know what I'm trying to get at, like, is it, do we need to do something different between elementary and intermediate? Is there a difference in how they're voting for the calendar? I'm just really curious about that. And I, I, and it may not have any, um, it may not play any role in this, but that was one of the questions that came to my mind. And it, it, it seems like we should be able to, to at least get that, that data by building level.
Sure, so I think, I think to answer your question, can we, yes. Did we, no. So we just ask it by a level at this point. So what level, it's just demographic information, what level do you currently work in? Elementary, intermediate, uh, secondary, middle school and high school. So we only have it at that level. Um, we do not have it by building and also it's like collective. So I think we can add questions, more dropdowns and then you could get some information differently, but we have not done that in the past.
So from the initial survey, you can't then look at the responses by building level? On that Survey Monkey survey?
No, because we don't collect it in that manner, it's just an answer to the question, but we don't turn around and sort by that answer to the question.
That's my question though, can you, can you sort by?
And not, I don't think you can do it unless you create it in that way, to, from the beginning, which we haven't done.
Okay, okay. I'm just curious if that plays any role.
So in order to do what you're doing, we would have to take all six hundred, four hundred and seventeen of those responses and go through and see how they answered question twenty-two and then sort those by hand four hundred and seventeen times.
Okay, so in your experience, would you wanna put input, does that play a role at all or no? And I, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Oh, I'm, I'm totally fine. I'm leaving. So, uh, I, I, you're gonna, I mean, you're, you're gonna have to weigh it out because you have a hundred and twenty-three certified staff members at the high school. So there's a small percentage of people that are gonna, you know, influence or not influence enough. I mean, that's what you're looking at, the biggest majority of your teaching staff is gonna be in those elementary levels because we have more of them. But I think the process is really, really good from the perspective of, we get a lot of information from our survey. That's great, comes from everybody, uh, and we don't sort that out either on who's answering what or how. But also the makeup of the committee, because, I mean, you've been involved in that. People aren't holding back in terms of, well, that's not gonna work. I mean, you get the semesters too far out of kilter, that's not gonna work for secondary people. Well, why not? And they'll have justification for that. So, so then it becomes, can we compromise? Can we make that number a little closer? So they're still not ever perfect, but it's closer than what it was and is it workable? Yes. So I, I think the committee takes care of the balance that you might be looking at, but if that information is important, um, I mean, I certainly think we can take steps to try to find it or get it that way. I just don't know what it's going to do from your decision-making. Cause think about, are you gonna have a calendar for elementary, a different calendar for middle, different calendar for high school? And in doing so, there's lots of different things that are gonna impact. I mean, you have nutrition people, you'll have transportation crazy, you know, she'll have all kinds of different things if people are operating under different calendars. So I don't know what it would, what it would benefit, but we can certainly get it for the board to review.
And it may not, it's just a question that came to my mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think the two biggest concerns or diff, the differences in grade level come out in the committee a little bit. You said one about the semesters being, uh, I need, they like those even at the secondary level. And then, uh, the elementary level, they really expressed that they don't like starting the school year on a Monday.
Right.
Because that's a long week for younger kids.
Correct.
However, the secondary level doesn't like starting on a Thursday because they feel like kids don't show up. So those are the two big ones that.
Last day of school, uh, because you have finals week in the last week. And so secondary folks like to have that time because they're getting their finals in, so having a week in order to do that. Um, but that, that's not important to elementary people, so they wanna know when their fun day is gonna be, so.
I can go back and look, but I was just wondering if you can get off the top of your head what the top two concerns from your survey were.
That's a really great question. I don't know that we broke down, you know, primary concerns. Again, I think we look at it a little bit from a holistic perspective of what are the kinds of things that we wanna try to problem solve. So that's a really good question. You know, lots of feedback that we get, um, is regarding the, the amount of time that we go to school. Uh, and so if you're asking, what's the biggest concern that came out of the feedback that we got? Well, that's number one, is that we go to school too many days. Uh, but that's really beyond the scope of this committee, uh, in terms of their work. That, that should happen with the board negotiations team, um, but that would definitely be the number one concern. Sure.
Just to go to your question, it seemed like, as I recall, every year is pretty close vote.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I, I think I'd have to go back and look at it to, to pull it up exactly, but last year was probably the, the most diverse calendars that we've had in a while. Sometimes, again, it's just hard the way days fall, like Christmas as an example, if it falls in the middle of the week and what you can do with break time, uh, around that particular holiday. And, and this year and last both, we've had the fortune of being on weekends, so we have a little more flexibility uh, in how we control those days. But last year we had very diverse options, from the time of the year that we started, when we were getting out. Uh, one calendar had complete Thanksgiving off, the other one did not. One had, uh, Christmas break being, you know, much more shorter. I think there maybe was something to do with spring break in there as well. So there was two very different calendars and yet the vote was very similar, almost fifty-fifty. Uh, and they had way different options, so I, I think you're accurate.
What, what would it take to get the two committees to work together?
What committees?
Negotiation and calendar committee. Cause a lot of the comments on the calendar committee, um, they don't, the teachers don't like the length of the school. Staff doesn't like the length of the school year. What would it take to get those two committees to work together?
Um, I, I don't think they should work together, to be honest with you. I think the calendar committee's role is exactly what it is. This board and, and historically, the board for USD four-five-seven has given input to the staff in the process. Um, not every district does that. So I think this committee is serving their role the way they should. Um, they're, they're, they're getting input, they're providing board with information, they're essentially doing your legwork for you. Um, and then they're making a recommendation to you. Negotiations is something that's completely different from that. Um, and that doesn't stop the board from, from doing anything in terms of lengthening the calendar, shorting the calendar. That all goes through negotiations, but that's through that process and I don't think you can combine the two of them. That's my personal opinion. Other questions?
Just, just to clarify here, this is a wonderful presentation, but we're not acting necessarily to that.
That's correct, yeah, so it gives you time to kind of mellow things, uh, gives us an opportunity for you to hear things from different people. Um, and then if there's no other questions, then we would have this on the consent agenda at our next meeting. Okay?
Are, my question is, are you gonna miss hearing this, um, meeting?
Yes, absolutely. It is really a fun committee, I'm not lying. It's, it's a thankless committee and I tell every group that comes in and, and starts every single year, but it is fun. I mean, ten drafts and you get some bizarre things out there and it makes you think, oh yeah. Until you start digging in and start thinking, well, it's gonna cause this, it's gonna cause that. But it really is a fun committee. I hope the members of the committee think that as well, but, uh, it is, it is something different, something fun.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
It's kind of off-topic. So the contracts, so we have the calendar committee that does this and then the negotiations committee. When does the negotiations committee finalize the negotiations?
Yep, so there's not really a deadline to finalize. That process will start, um, the thirty-first of March, we exchange, uh, letters, um, what, what the board's interested in negotiating. There's some mandatory things, um, that are negotiable, but that'll start the thirty-first of March. So this committee, again, has made a recommendation. So John, I'll, I'll backtrack a couple of years and I think it's been two years. But we had a process where we wanted to do something different with parent-teacher conferences. And so this committee had done their work, they had a calendar, made a recommendation of the board. The board accepted that recommendation and we had a calendar set for times moving forward. Then through the negotiations process, we wanted to shorten our contract down and we did that by one day, by changing how we utilize parent-teacher conference days. And that was able to be done through negotiations, so we just went backwards and changed that day. So that can still be done.
That was my question basically, is how far they're, they're apart to where if something was changed in the negoti, negotiations, you can still go back and.
Sure.
Even if the, if the calendar's approved.
Right, yep, you can, the board has complete authority to set the calendar. So again, that kinda goes back to, the, this board, historical boards have given this group that authority. I mean, it's written in the negotiated agreement to do that, but that all started through, through the board's willingness, if you will, to, to let this committee have the, the time or the input to do that. But, but ultimately, setting a calendar is completely within the board's authority. So that would all happen through the negotiations process, um, to, if you wanted to reduce those days or do whatever, that can be done through that. Which might be getting back to a little bit with what Jack was saying, like, why don't we wait? And I don't know if she asked this question or somebody else earlier.
It was, well, it was mentioned in one of the calendar committee meetings.
So why don't we wait and not do this until after negotiations? So there are times where negotiations won't be done by the start of school. Um, that has happened historically at different times. Sometimes there's single issues, sometimes there's bigger things. But if, if the board and the teachers union couldn't come to an agreement on a contract by the time we started school, we wouldn't have a calendar to start school because we were still waiting for that contract to be done. So the importance is, and that's why maybe I answered that abruptly, but that's why this committee should stand alone versus negotiations. We've, we've set a calendar, so no matter what happens in that process, we have a calendar to go to. People in the community know when our calendar is, as we're on the recruiting trail, we know when our start date is. So that doesn't influence or impact negotiations from taking longer if it would take longer.
I might add to that too, that if we don't have a calendar approved, say by, probably at the latest, the first of April, we will start to trigger a lot of different issues that will come up. In terms of, we have enrollment that's coming up and parents are gonna wanna know enrollment, what those dates potentially are. Now, that doesn't mean that it couldn't, there couldn't be a minor change to it, but if we absolutely don't have a calendar approved, so, and the first of April is really the first day that we would probably be negotiating. So the likelihood of having negotiations done before the calendar needs to be approved is, in my mind, zero. I mean, it's, it'd be nice if negotiations got done in a day. Gil, can we make that happen?
I'll bring ice cream.
You're gonna be on record, you know, one day. Say it.
It depends. Are you gonna have bomb pops?
Okay, that works too.
Any other questions that I can answer?
Well, I just appreciate the back, kind of backstory and a little bit of history, cause like I said, new to the process and just kinda, uh, thinking through it as you're speaking.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, you'll, you'll get more familiar with it. It's, like I said, it's a good committee, but, uh, there's a lot that goes into it, for sure. All right, thank you.
So, so later, I mean, years from now, you know, phone a friend. You'll be a friend, maybe that someone can phone.
Your, your phone number.
Thank you. Hey, I guess we will move on to board open discussion. Who wants to start? The volunteers, can John, can you start then? Do you have anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Um, there's a lot of activities that happened over the last week. Voice swimming team did awesome, qualified for state. Eleven wrestlers qualified for state. Tomorrow's senior night for basketball. And the play, not a musical, the play. Lots happened.
Bowling?
Bowling, yep.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I was in the same hotel as the, uh, the swimmers. They were in Topeka and, and the door opened and there's, uh, some of our swimmers right there in the, in the, in their socks, you know, going up to their room. So I rode up with them and had to ask them a couple of questions about it. And they're outstanding young individuals and it's just really exciting that they were able to go. I'm so glad you mentioned that and, and some of the other outstanding things that are going on in, in our school district. Good young individuals, I, you know, someday maybe, uh, um, we'll have a, two big teams there on the swim team. Having swum in high school, you know, it's just like, wow, you know, go guys and, and it's great to see them out there. The community only has so many resources we're able to put together to help them swim and the weather is always a factor there, uh, for them to be able to practice. I know we had original design in the high school for, uh, I forget what you call it, but anyway, uh, facilities for them to practice in. I just don't know how we're able to, you know, would ever be able to handle that. I just don't know how we're able to, would ever be able to handle that price tag, plus the maintenance. But we'll just keep looking for opportunities with the community and for building facilities and then rooting on our Buffalos as they go to state. I thought that was fabulous. I don't have anything else.
I'm especially excited that we got to have kids in the meeting again tonight in our spelling bee championship. I look forward to having more students in here, so we can congratulate them on all their successes, hopefully some of those athletes, too. That's one.
The biggest thing that I can think of is parent-teacher conferences coming up. Hopefully you all have kids that are doing better than my kids. I'm just kidding. Not really, but. And then, like always, I just love to plug the things that the counselors are doing. Enrollment is coming up, I know at the high school, and they've been sending reminders, they've been posting scholarships, they've had another parent session, wasn't able to attend that one, but I wish I would have, because it was a really important topic. So again, like, I was just applauding the work that the counselors are doing.
Ken?
I just, really, you guys take it all.
You can have the volunteers, you have the first.
No, I really enjoyed tonight, the presentation for the students, and it was just, it was really great to see just how great they did presenting to everybody, and they didn't seem intimidated or all anything, so that was really cool. And we were in Richtown this weekend for traveling volleyball, so there was a lot of Garden City people there, between that and the wrestling, and got to see a lot of people, and there was a lot of talk about just how proud we are to be Buffalos, and hoping we can continue that. And we have a lot going on, a lot of great things.
Dr. Carlin?
Thanks for bringing up parent-teacher conferences. Spring is always the tough time of year. It seems like our numbers are always lower in the spring, so a good reminder to people to make time to do that. And the school, our folks at school really appreciate those opportunities to have conversations with parents and work sometimes on issues that we all need to be working together on. So we, I think our technology people are coming back later this week, so we hope to be...
Traveling today and start work tomorrow.
Okay, so we hope to be really putting to use some of the new technology that we have for the next meeting as far as doing the broadcast and stuff. We, hopefully, we won't have to set up an iPad, we'll be able to use the cameras and improve sound and some of those things. So the goal is sometime later this week to do some training on that for everybody. And then last is Saturday, we had our first legislative coffee. Encourage you to get the opportunity to get to some of those. There are a lot of issues that are happening in Topeka that involve public schools. Unfortunately, many of them are not what would be positive things for public schools, but could potentially have an impact on our district and others across the state. So KSB does put stuff out regularly. I would really encourage the board to stay abreast of some of those issues. And there's just a lot of things right now that would not bode well for our district and many others. So, and also encourage members of the public to reach out to legislators. Our local legislators have a history of being very supportive of public schools, and that topic came up Saturday. Their suggestion was to contact some of the leaders in the legislature, committee leaders, and the Speaker of the House and the Majority Leader, because it's really going to be imperative that parents and our communities make sure that schools, public schools, remain a priority. Because if we don't have the resources, all these great things we're seeing and talking about happen, because we have the resources to be able to make that possible for our kids. So, so that's it.
Yes? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can add a little bit to that, too, it's, you know, it's good to be conservative or, you know, to take different approaches to funding schools, you know, at the state level, but some of the bills up there are not helpful at all. And so I just encourage anybody that can engage with our legislators and then the right legislators in some of those committees. We, we'll see how, I mean, turnaround is this next week, and so bills have to be out of the House of Origin and over to the other side. And we'll see what makes it and what doesn't. And that usually is the time to then sit up and see what seems to have legs, because some of this stuff is nuts for school, for school kids. It's not helpful to kids, it's not helpful to teachers. And we've just got to communicate. And sometimes it might look good, it's from certain perspectives and certain parts of the state, and just not be helpful to us out here in recruiting or operating our classrooms at all. And there are some of those bills, and so we've just got to stay engaged. Without naming names or bills, but, yeah, thanks.
Our next Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, March 7, at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room, and we will move into executive session.
Madam President, I simply go into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss a legal matter pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under KLMA, beginning at, do you want to go 7:55?
That's fine.
Sixteen minutes?
Yep.
And the open meeting will resume in the board meeting room at 8:15. I would like to invite Dr. Carlin, Heath Hogan, and Jennifer Penningham.
So a second.
I'm sorry?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?